Call this regular meeting of Grand Forks City Council to order. And can I have a motion to recess into the primary committees? Councilor Doherty, Councilor Smith, all those in favor. The primary committee meeting agenda, a motion to adopt the agenda for the 17th to December. Councilor Kendall, Councilor Wires, all those in favor. And our delegation this evening is our hard-working Graham Watts from the Regional District of Cootney Boundee presenting the Kettle River Watershed Management Plan. Just to remind you that our partners, Area D, Bill Baird, and Christina Lake and Area D, were big players in supporting this, so this is very much a regional initiative. Welcome, Graham.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Good evening. So, tonight, finally to share briefly about the Kettle River Watershed Management Plan, technical assessment, Phase One, and give an introduction to our planning process. Is this all right, the position I've been here, standing? Yeah. Everything great? Maybe I'll just, I see you do have some copies of this, I'll just pass around the one found copy, this is the city's copy here, so thank you. So, we've got this working, here we go. So, tonight I'd like to talk about the watershed management plan overall, and then look at some of the focal questions that were addressed in the report, and some of the issues that are top of mind for people. And then I'll take a look at also the next steps, the Kettle River Waterwise project, which is something of interest that we might be interested in working on together across the region. It's a water stewardship kind of education program. I've been looking at that for years. So, the Kettle River Watershed, let's see if I can get that. We start east of Vernon, southeast of Vernon, up in the Monashies, and head down through the Christian Valley, meeting up with the west kettle here, the Myers Creek sub watershed here, Boundary Creek, Torota Creek, Granby, of course, the main last residual area here in Christina Creek before flowing down into the States. It's a very large watershed that's, as you know, an international watershed crossing into and out of the United States before it heads back in again. So, the Regional District is leading this watershed study to, first of all, look at water supply, use, quality, and aquatic ecosystems. And that's our state of the watershed report that I'm presenting on tonight. But the main work that I'm hired to do is to come in, and I don't know if I'm a Swiss Army knife or hired gun for this, but to develop recommendations with all stakeholders on policy, planning, and stewardship for the watershed. And so, that is basically my job, is to work with all the entire network of stakeholders that are connected in this river. A few days ago, I was down in Curly presenting in Perry County, and it's just kind of a snowball that keeps on building here. So, the main focus of my work right now is understanding watershed issues and helping the public understand watershed issues through public presentations and variety of workshops and meetings and that kind of thing. We're using the results from a survey that went out this fall, actually extended the deadline on that to the end of the month here. If anyone else would like to submit the electronic survey, that would be great. That way, I don't have to enter the data. In the spring, we'll be working on using the input from this fall for developing goals, objectives, and priorities, and then taking the results from that to developing recommendations and our solutions. So, overall, we'll be aiming to be finishing a draft plan in the late winter of 2013-14, and by the spring of 2014, we're working on to give location planning. There's a great network of people who are involved in this, the steering committee are the elected officials from the Regional District, who are basically steering the overall whole process that Mayor Taylor is on that, representing the city, both on the steering committee as well as Stakeholder Advisory Group, which is a larger group shared by, sorry, yes, anyways, by Grace McGregor. And we also had a technical advisory committee supporting the Phase One state of the watershed. The report covered description of the watershed, water quantity, water quality, aquatic ecosystem data gaps. And the report actually helps give us a lot of information on key questions that the public is also asking about right now, which is really helpful. So, in the survey, I'm actually, I've entered over 400 of them now, and these questions just keep on coming up again. Are the river flows declining? People are really concerned about flows, about climate change, how much water we're using, what our impacts are on groundwater and aquatic ecosystems. So, first of all, the short answer on are the river flows declining is no, not at all on a long-term or a short-term basis. There is a small decline, if you look just at the last 30 years of data, but it's strongly skewed by this 1976. This is August flows at Lurie, just downstream of the international border. We do have an interesting thing where 2000 and 2010 was very, very dry, and everyone was very concerned the river was drying up. But the last two years, I apologize for the feet per second here, but the last two years were actually well within historical data, in fact, even a little bit higher than historical data for summer to early fall flows. What is interesting is in the wintertime, how it drops down below median flows, below normal, before rising up again. So, we do know what a multi-year drought is like. The 2003 was the driest year on record, and 2003 and 2009, there was a lot of fish kills. This is what really brought the Kettle River to a lot of people's awareness over the last few years. So, no significant trend across the entire record for annual average river flow, but as I said, we're back to normal now. Still a very steep decline. So, second question, what about climate change? Overall, we're expecting, you know, we're really not sure how it applies locally. In general, we might see more rain in the winter than we have historically. Last year is an example, of course, where local skiers were disappointed with the late start because of the heavy rainfall around Christmas. Sometimes what might happen in the southern interior is a higher, potentially earlier spring flood. So, there's, but the big one that I think that we want to be paying attention to is a longer dry season, a longer growing season with higher temperatures and lower precipitation. So, people are going to be having higher demands on water for agriculture and recreation, at the same time increasing stresses on the aquatic ecosystem and fisheries. And the number-one thing that people are talking about, you know, we're definitely relying on aquifer's degree now, and that will continue, and people are also talking about storage, what the needs are for storage. So, that's something that will definitely be studied in detail. The question of too much water is interesting. Overall, on an annual basis, we're within reason, I guess, within limits, because we have such a large amount of water flowing in the springtime. But in late summer, total surface licenses are more than they should be in terms of in-stream needs. But only about 50% of those surface licenses are actually used, depending on the year, because many licensees have switched to groundwater, as you know. That is unregulated. The large purveyors and municipal systems, of course, have to report and are licensed by individual wells aren't. So, generally, the surface, the surpluses in the spring and deficit in the fall, as you know. Just drawing your attention to particularly the dry years, for instance, 2003, the total late summer water use across the entire watershed, surface and groundwater, is slightly higher than the flows in the river. So, why doesn't the river run dry? That's the question here. Those who are paying attention to springs and have a well and that kind of thing know that the groundwater is continually refreshing and continually discharging to the stream. And in some areas, though, the surface water actually can lose to the groundwater, and that might be going on in Grand Forks area, and also might be going on in Midway area.
So, it's our freshet in the spring that's flooding out underground, and then it's coming back in the warmer?
That's right. There's several sources for the groundwater, so some of it's coming from the mountainsides, they call it block recharge. Some of it's coming from directly on the surface. We have lots of sand and gravel on the surface in our aquifer here, so some definitely comes in. And then, in the floodplain, certainly, a large portion of our spring flood, 10 to 15% of it, depending on where we are, helps recharge that groundwater. So, impacts on groundwater, most residents in the entire watershed and our economic activity depend, to some degree, on groundwater. It's a hugely important resource. Many home, agricultural, municipal water systems have switched, but also maintaining their surface licenses. So, there's potentially some double counting in the data, though, of course, we don't have very good data on groundwater use in most of the watershed. And we have a really good data source for the Grand Forks aquifer, both, you know, within the city here, as we've seen recently, but also across the broad area. And we do know a little bit about what's going on there. So, once again, no long-term trend. This is the monitoring well down in the industrial area, and it's been staying to, you know, coming back after every good flow. It is the only monitoring well in this aquifer. The rest of them are at pumping locations, so it's kind of hard to tell how it's doing further away from the river. The only other monitoring well in the watershed is up at Beaver Dome. I just thought I'd show a picture. This is known well locations in the Grand Forks area. There's a lot more that aren't known, but these are known well locations. And so, this large area is, basically, we're sitting on a big reservoir with our, everyone has straws in it, and everyone has the potential to impact it. It's very, very connected to surface water. And so, the prime example, of course, is nitrate. And this data is a couple of years old, I think, up to 2009 data, but very high levels of nitrate nitrogen concentrations on the east side of Carson Road. I live just right over here, but east side of Carson Road, down in Nursery. As you heard recently from Mr. Allard, it's, your wells in the city are, you know, are in good shape in terms of nitrate, but the southeast part of the aquifer is definitely has some concern. We're very connected to surface water here. So, we know it's a very valuable resource that is renewed from year to year. I've used my 10 minutes. So easy to do that.
Take your time, Graham.
Okay. But the key with, that we've learned about the aquifer is that high water extraction can further decrease late summer river flows. So, that's been mentioned in this study. It's part of, it's been looked at in a recent study done by Forest Lands and Natural Resource Operations, looking at fish habitat, where they've detected kind of the signature of extraction on flows available for fish, both at Midway and for here. So, the conclusion from Wayatol, who wrote that excellent report on the Grand Forks aquifer in 2010, was that any new large water supply well should be subject to a detailed hydrogeological study. And looking at your recent report, the capture zone has been delineated, the connection to the river is, I think, understood. I think the remaining question is about sort of long-term interaction with river flows, especially in dry years. I think that would be worthwhile following up on. And the other key is contamination. I'm aware of some contamination issues, of course, within the city of Grand Forks area, and out in the larger aquifer, we're definitely concerned about these as well. So, there's still some further studies that can be done, but we have a really good information base, and I think we have the ability to go out and start promoting some stewardship and some protection of groundwater. So, we'll be getting back to that in a little bit. Our aquatic ecosystems, it's a very important sport fishery in the watershed. It brings in a lot of money in tourism, but over the 2000-2010 period in particular, it deteriorated, both due to human caused and natural factors. In dry years, even historically, the seasonal low flow is well below those habitat thresholds. So, once you start getting just a little bit of trickle in the river, you know, those large areas of coral aren't producing, you know, aren't producing the food for the base of the food chain, there's very few refugia for the trout, and the mountain whitefish, for instance, just get stressed and die, as happened in 2009, and I think for the last couple of years, too. Even though we've had higher flows the last couple of years, temperature has continued to come up. And this is actually one of the key water quality parameters that's above guidelines for the river. So, it's consistently high in the summertime, and some of the fish are somewhat adapted to it, but in low-flow years, when there isn't the extra oxygen in there, the fish definitely get stressed out. Overfishing is also implicated, and that's the other concern, is even though there's been a catching release policy in much of the rivers, it's, they're not finding the larger trout showing up in their surveys above 35 centimeters, so catchable ones seem to be disappearing over there. There's still some debate about how much that's happening, but I think that's, a lot of those questions will be answered in this in-depth study that's coming out in March from our colleagues in Forest Lands and Natural Resource Operations. And this is a favorite topic. I actually got to study these in depth earlier in my career, but here we have a really high level of public concern about riparian areas, and rightly so, I think. There's a lot of areas where shoreline development, range management, forestry recreation, they all kind of converge on this streamside zone that's so important for wildlife and so important for, you know, water quality, et cetera. And there is a lot of information out there about the graded riparian areas, mostly anecdotal, though. We don't have good broad, you know, broad-scale studies of how riparian areas are actually doing, and particularly, we have very little information on the wetlands as well. And I'm also very aware that it's a complex management issue with many different users' needs and expectations. So, what's important to do within, you know, an urban context, we have to think completely out, you know, with different lenses on as we get into the agricultural area, and then again, as we get up into the forestry land base. So, we've struck a riparian working group that's actually meeting on Wednesday to help gather missing data, consider the policy needs, and study the management recommendations for our Stakeholder Advisory Group.
Graham, what are your recommendations for that riparian area regulations to be implemented in our area, as part of the government's model?
It's potential. There's a lot of questions still. I think right now, we're not prescribing any recommendations. The riparian area regulation, as you know, is brought from the province, has been applied in the coast and certain parts of the interior, but not here yet. And the Regional District actually tried to bring in a policy similar to that for Christina Lake to help protect the foreshore from development, and it faced a lot of political challenges bringing it forward. So, I think what we're trying to do is study how the issue applies here, and then make the policy recommendations that really work well. We definitely want to be ahead of the game on it.
Does the Fisheries Act, the Fisheries Act, does it allow that piece to be enforceable under that, under the Fisheries Committee with the QEP recommendations?
Yes, I mean, that's, I think that model works really well.
It does?
Yeah, I think that model works really well.
Okay, good.
It's, I think we just need to help bring the understanding up of it here, because currently, you know, it's, I think, within the current context, I think, in the Regional District, it's hard to bring in enforcement and things like that, too. So, but it might apply individually by municipalities as well, you know, within larger contexts, for sure. But a big part of that is, on the political end, is trying to bring about a new ethic about water stewardship here. That's actually really exciting. So, we've looked at the education needs that are sort of being indicated by the surveys and public response, what kind of things do people need to know more about? And we've looked at the resource needs in terms of water conservation, water conservation issues and groundwater protection, and started developing a package. Right now, it's just at the proposal stage, but we're developing a package of sort of a multi-year education program on water conservation, groundwater protection, and riparian habitat. And this would have both education as well as hands-on demonstration-type work, potentially even incentives, we'll see what kind of partners we're able to bring on board. So, Grand Forks Rotary is going to be heavily involved as sort of one of the community hosts, and I've started talking with Council Wires about involving the Environment Committee for discussions about how Grand Forks could be involved. So, very early stages yet, we're just starting to scope it out, but we basically have definitely recognized the need for education and stewardship promotion in the Boundary. So, the other next steps, there's some technical work to do to figure out if we have population growth and increased demand for mining and certain recreation needs, that kind of thing. So, water supply and demand scenarios, we'll be looking at next year with support from our Technical Advisory Committee. Storage opportunities is another one. So, what surface and ground-related storage might there be for water, what's available? What kind of constraints do we have? I think we want to have a really good understanding of this before we start making recommendations, you know, from our advisory group about put a dam up here, or, you know, a bunch of small dams over there. It's a really complex issue. Thankfully, in the Okanagan, they've had a lot of experience with it, and a lot of learning to come out of what works and what doesn't, but we also have quite a different context from them, too. So, there's some good knowledge regionally about that. So, any questions?
Questions? Okay, Councilor Watts.
Thank you, Your Worship. Am I?
Yeah.
Well, first of all, Graham, thank you for your presentation, and I just want to personally thank you for coming before the Environment Committee and offering Into the Future Now to be a permanent item on our, a standing item on our agenda for updates on the Kettle River Watershed Management Plan. So, the next meeting, for those who are interested, because it is an open meeting for anyone, is January the 17th at the Regional District Office at 11 o'clock. And Graham, of course, keeps it self-updated on the current activities of the river, which is very precious to all of us, and we look forward to the continued relationship.
Further? I'd also like to compliment you, Graham, in getting out there and meeting and connecting with the community. It's kind of an esoteric thing to a lot of people, but you've made it down-to-earth and understandable for a lot of people that I've met that have seen your presentations. Good work out there.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Motion to accept it. Councilor Smith, Councilor Doherty, all those in favor. We're just accepting your report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Graham.
Thank you.
Okay. No unfinished business. Recommendations for consideration, the CFO report on Policy Number 805 Asset Disposal. And we're looking for a motion here to accept the report and to adopt the Policy 805 Asset Disposal Procedure policy. Mr. Kendall moves it, and seconds Councilor Smith. Discussion on this, this is, you can see chattel, mostly small items, machinery, equipment, vehicles, that kind of thing. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I read through it. I, for the most part, seem to agree with it. My question is, though, what is the purpose? We've survived this long without this policy, as it's a new policy, so what?
I see it as prophylactic in a way that, you know, avoids conflict if someone ends up with something that the city was using, and we can say there was a formal process to go, disposed of that in a fair and equitable way. So, I can't see that there was any scandal or any concern that brought this forward. Can I ask our CAO for comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason for the asset disposal policy is, once we, like you mentioned, is a fair and equitable process, so when we have an asset that's reached its useful life, we can either dispose of it in several matters, but it will be done in such a manner that everybody would have the opportunity to bid on it in a fair way. So, if it ever was questioned as part of good governance, we would want to have basically a good council policy placed to allow it to be done properly.
Thank you.
All right.
So, a motion, did we? Yes, Councilor Kendall made it, Councilor Smith seconded, so this is to recommend to council to receive and to council to adopt. All those in favor. Carry. The next item is Policy 800, Purchasing Policy. And again, I think this is coming forward as good governance in terms of our process, but basically, the purchasing policy covers a broad range of purchasing by both the frontline staff, I mean, we even defined it right down to working staff, and whether they can spend $50 or $100 on a piece of something they need immediately. So, I think it's a really comprehensive policy and well-written. Counselor Doherty, second. Counselor Rochagan, and discussion. Counselor Rochagan.
I'm not on. Okay. No, I, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This policy, I don't believe, is new, is it? Is this a new policy?
Mr. Mayor, no, it's a, it is a new policy replacing the old policy.
Okay, and that's the question I have, then. What has changed between this policy and the past policy, if anything?
I would ask for the answer.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. The key elements of the changes in this policy are, there's greater controls on the organization. The CAO will be responsible for securing purchases over the manager's spending authority. So, everything that's identified in the financial plan will require the CAO sign off without each department head basically going and making a significant purchase without full consideration of the CAO to ensure that those controls are in place. The other piece in there is setting the manager's spending authority limits to $10,000. And within that, we're going to be following the TILMA regulations to ensure that we're following the agreements that have been reached. The other key element to this is the tendering process. It is going to basically allow for more members or for the public to attend the tendering openings. These will be public openings, and the review process is explained in there, and how we'll be undertaking the tendering process. Basically, Mr. Mayor, this will be a policy that will help ensure good governance throughout this administration and through the future administration, just due to the fact that there's been some questions on, you know, what happened around Canada in the last several months. This policy here will ensure that will be very unlikely to happen within our organization.
Thank you for the comments. All those in favor, opposed, carry. And we are down to questions from the audience this evening, from the gallery. Any questions anyone would like to bring up in this primary committee meeting, particularly associated with the items that were on the agenda but not limited to that? There will be another public period at the end of the regular meeting.
Downstairs, you don't have a front door, you haven't had for a couple of weeks and weeks. And somebody who runs a business here and wanted to make a payment, and it was like the end of the period, end of the day, normally she just drops it in there. And there's no place to drop it. Yeah, there's no slot. So, how do people, what about doing that? Are you making any kind of adjustment?
Can I add a quick point on that from our CAO?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The expectation is that the door will be, the door will be replaced within the next week. The door is in such a state of disrepair that it required a little bit of extra time. We have not made provisions on our temporary door for drops. It was a piece that basically, I think, that we don't run up, but we are expecting to have that door up and ready in the very near future. We haven't had any concerns from any members of the public that I've been made aware of in respect to that, so, but we'd be happy to discuss any inconveniences that it's caused for any members of the public.
That was it. That's all.
Can you plan ahead a little better so you're there before the door falls?
Okay.
Thank you very much. All right, a motion to adjourn, so moved, and we are back in the regular council meeting. All right, first item of business is the December 17th regular council agenda, a motion to adopt. Councilor Doherty, Councilor Kendall, all those in favor. Carry. We have two sets of minutes. December the 3rd, special meeting minutes, a motion to adopt. Councilor Rochagan, Councilor Doherty, all those in favor. December 3rd, regular meeting minutes, motion to adopt. Councilor Wires, Councilor Kendall, all those in favor. We have no delegations. Bringing us to reports from council. And may I start with Councilor Rochagan?
Yes, you may. I have an own report this evening. I would, however, like to wish everybody the best and happy holidays. Thank you.
Councilor Doherty.
Your Worship. I attend the Santa Claus parade and help to decorate the float. I attend at Silver Kettle Home for the seniors, the grand opening with yourself and Councilor Smith. It was a very big turnout there. It was a nice, and I met Emily, John Slater there, too. And I attend breakfast with Santa Claus at the Walkin' Angels Legion. And that's all I have here today, Worship.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
And I wish everybody Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Counselor Wires.
Thank you, Worship. Begin my report with the Public Library Board Meeting is this Wednesday at the Library Meeting Room. It is an open meeting to the public and library members, and it starts at 7:00 PM. In addition to that, the library has been very active In addition to that, the library has been very active, the Friends of the Library have been very active in their fundraising, especially in the latter part of this fall. October 25th, 26th, and 27th, they held the library book sale and they raised $1,800. So, the library thanks everyone for their support. We also have been advised that their December 4th library cookie sale generated over $800. I managed to bake eight dozen. Seven dozen made it to the, the table and one dozen went with, with my husband, who has a slightly burnt. The first, the first batch, so, very, very, a, a good sense of support from our community for the, our local library. Now, I just wanted to report, one of our directors did attend the October 23rd Future of Libraries one-day session down in Langley. William Kelly attended that meeting. And he brought to the table at a recent board meeting that the future of libraries is going to change dramatically in the future. And with that change, well, just in perspective, he, he gave us an example, what's happening out there in the, in the cyber world. For every minute, there is 48 hours of new content being loaded onto YouTube. So, the libraries of the future, today they're an information center and cultural center. In the future, you're going to see the libraries being your third place in the community, your home, your work, and your library. And it'll be producing information, products, production studio within the library, search command centers with real-time information on screens, a very busy, interactive place. So, this is interesting to note that one of the board members took the initiative to go down to this meeting and it's going to play a big part in their strategic planning into the future. Our new interim chair is Martin Demay, who is on the Board of Trustees. And Martin will be the interim chair until the elections that will follow in March of 2013. And I attended the Christina Lake Stewardship Society's Watershed Management Plan Review on December 5th at Christina Lake. Once again, the Eurasian Mill Foil was one of the main topics. And noted that this year's, or the 2013 team that will be diving is, has grown substantially to, I believe, nine divers, is it, Graham?
This year, they had nine divers in two boats.
Oh, four.
Yeah.
It's going to 14, isn't it?
I, I think it's going to go to 10.
Oh, 10.
Yeah, they had one who was, so, two teams of five.
Two teams of five.
Yeah.
That'll be going seven days a week.
That's right.
Yes. So, that was interesting to hear. And a notation that, you know, support for, for this initiative is, it's critical for our lake that we all share in, in this region. And, and the fact that we may not participate as a city in, in weed management with them, but it should be a consideration into the future that we play a role in, in working with our regional partners to address these, these issues. They pointed out that there are inspection stations in Idaho State that inspect the boats, but there's boats that are coming freely into Canada that aren't getting inspected, and that's a, a critical problem. The library staff Christmas party was held on December the 14th, and this is where the Board of Trustees at the end of the year, under the guidance of William Kelly, who, if you haven't had a function at the, at the gallery, too, William is the, the chef, chef of the day. He, he coordinated our Christmas dinner where we appreciate, you know, give our appreciation to the staff for the, the hard work that they've done throughout the year and making the library the important center that it is in our community today. So, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and for those of you traveling, be safe on the roads, and we'll see you in 2015. And I look forward to an exciting year ahead. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kendall?
Thank you, your worship. On December 6th, I attended a, the second meeting with Story and Company to further go into the branding project they were doing for the city. Counselor Smith and other members of the Steering Committee were also in attendance. The process is proceeding very well and we're looking forward to the final pieces being in place in the near future. On December 7th, I was privileged to be part of the, what I consider hugely successful Christmas parade, along with other members of council, Santa and Mrs. Claus. And I'd like to give a big round of applause to the city staff and council who put in a lot of time on the float. And I'd like to say how wonderful it was to see the spirit of all those involved in making the parade happen, show up, and the faces of the city residents that were out. To be a part of the parade was, was a great thing for the city.
Carry.
On December 11th, I attended a meeting with the Boundary Museum Society. The group had a very good year with many goals being reached. They have some new exciting projects planned for this year, and they're especially proud of having the stagecoach being restored. And they have plans in the works to be able to transport this gem to other venues as a symbol and promotional tool for the city. So, I think that's an exciting project. Today, along with Counselor Smith, I attended a day-long strategic planning session with the Economic Development Advisory Committee. It proved to be a great session with some very, a very focused outcome, and we'll be providing a full report to council in the new year. And all things considered, I feel the city has moved forward in many positive ways and we're on the right track, and together we can make amazing things happen for the city. And I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you very much, Counselor Kendall. Counselor Smith?
Thank you, your worship. So, as Counselor Kendall pointed out, is that the Story and Company update session for the branding? And it's, it seems really on track. They, they've got the pulse of the community, you know, through all their surveys and interviews. And what they've provided us so far with this move board being the latest thing, you know, look forward to some really interesting and, and positive results coming out of that. As, I think somebody else pointed out, service awards, that went very well. So, a couple of 25-year employees there, and a couple of five-years were awarded. So, it was encouraging to see that, you know, you get that kind of commitment from, you know, career people that, that put their life into, into the community. Along with Counselor Doherty and Mayor Taylor, I was at the, the Silver Kettle Village, Silver Kettle Village opening, yeah, and that was great to, you know, see all those people and actually talk to some of the residents there and just how pleased they are with the level of service and, you know, the facility is just a great facility. And on the 7th, 8th, I attended where I was actually emcee for the Christmas Choral Society's concert, and it was Joan Thompson's final, final concert, which is kind of sad because she did such a, such a great job. And happy holidays to everyone and happy new year, and see you next year.
Thank you, Counselor. I have a couple of comments on the city side. The, the tragedy that happened in Connecticut, Newtown, Connecticut. It's been suggested that we write a letter from the city, basically offering our moral support, just letting them know that, in fact, it's rocked our community. So, could we have a motion to do that? Counselor Doherty, Counselor Wires? Comment? None? All those in favor? And our next item of business is good news. I'd like to announce that OmniTrax and BNSF and the Consortium of Shippers have come to an agreement, basically giving us some security in the railway for the next five years. The companies got together and hammered out this deal that has basically meant that there was no, no stoppage in service. I think it's been a success all the way around. I would like to thank Grace McGregor and the Regional District for stepping forward and carrying this for the first part of the game. But it was the city, too, that really took a leadership role in defining the importance of this to our city. And so, I would congratulate council and city staff on the role that we played in, in making this deal come through. I mean, there were a lot of moments there when we all thought it was going to be the end of the railway, but I think it, it certainly shows that, you know, taking a leadership role, being a catalyst worked very well and that we should be congratulating ourselves for that. So, that's, that's good news. The parade, I, I think the piece that amazed me was not how much candy the kids got, but how many there were, right? A community like ours that worries about being overtaken by gray, I think we clearly can see that there are a lot of children out there, too, a lot of families. And the Silver Kettle, one of the things that stood out in the speeches that were made there was a comment by the owner of the multiple branches of Silver Kettle throughout Alberta and British Columbia. Endron, Endron.
Yeah.
Endron? Difficult name. But Endron said that, you know, in the 25 or so communities they're dealing with, this was one of the best. Cooperative staff, reasonable expectations, problem-solving attitude.
Of course we are.
Of course we are.
Yes, you're right.
So, thank you for that compliment. To our staff, good job. That's it for my report and a motion to accept the reports. Counselor Doherty, Counselor Smith, all those in favor. And the Regional District report, Regional District has had their inaugural meeting. They have elected Chair Gray for a second term. Vice Chair for a second term will be Grace McGregor. The organization will be looking at an organizational review in 2013, which is, I think, a big deal to be able to look at yourself in a very healthy process. I've asked for one chairmanship change or committee change. I'd like to be on the German delegation and see whether or not there are things that we could do through economic development and the German connection that would benefit our community and capitalize on some of the things that the Germans have offered us in the past. And that is my report. I'll take questions on the, on the minutes of the Regional District that are in your information package. Hearing none. A motion to accept the Regional District report. Counselor Kendall, Counselor Smith, all those in favor. And we are down to the Manager of Technical Services on the Boundary Road Culvert Replacement. We recently had to act quickly to address a problem of a collapsed culvert on Boundary Drive. I think most of you are quite aware of that at this point. And council to receive the report, authorizing staff to proceed with the immediate replacement, which they are already working on. But I would ask if the technical manager has any comments to make.
I don't have any.
No. It's a good, good example of where, you know, we move in with a, a project like this to deal with an issue, but, you know, this is the kind of thing we're hoping we can address with our planning and are, are looking at where our fragile areas are so that we're not having to wait for them to break down like this, because it is gossly. But congratulations again, we moved in quickly, this problem is being addressed as it should be. It affected a big area there behind the culvert that was potentially in danger of flooding or at least problems with their, their whole drainage system. And council to receive the report. Counselor Smith, Counselor Doherty, all those in favor. We are down to the Manager of Technical Services report on slag pile. This is a potential stabilization remedy. We did order a report some time back where we were looking at the geotechnical condition of that area and the issue of the stream that runs, of the Overton Creek stream that runs underneath the slag pile. So, there are a number of recommendations here that, that we're looking at, and I would ask if there is any report on this from staff. Take it away.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the, through the last of a while, we've been following up on some reports from the, okay, so, we've been following up on some reports that there's been a history of some monitoring of the site that's been done, you know, in an informal format. But as you can see on that picture that's before council, there, there is quite a few tension cracks and fissures that, that have been, that we don't know if they've been expanding or not. But this is at the, I guess, the southeast portion of the slag pile as you approach the, towards the landfill. This pile here, the, those cracks that you see are, some of them are up to 30 to 40 feet deep. We want to basically go in and put some monuments on there and start to do a, an annual monitoring program to ensure that this isn't slopping or sliding. What we'll be able to do out of that is our geotechnical engineer will be able to make some assessments for us to understand if there is an emergency or if there is some immediate ramifications as a result of this. The fire chief is preparing a, a plan to, to deal with this if there, if there was ever a problem. We're going to be forthright in that, we're going to be preparing that plan. The other thing that we're going to do is we need to divert Overton Creek. Overton Creek basically flows across the road from, from the high side of the mountain and flows underneath the site pile. We don't know where that water daylight, but the geotechnical engineer suggested that these fissures or these big cracks are, as a result, high likelihood that they're the result of the creek flowing from underneath there. So, what we need to do is we need to work in partnership with our partners at Pacific Abrasives and divert that water away from there. And that'll involve a, a report from the geotechnical engineer along with the, the environmental monitor that will provide recommendations on how to do that in a safe manner without disrupting, disrupting the ecosystem. So, within that, we are going to have to fund the repairs in partnership with our, our partners at Pacific Abrasives. But they will allow us more information to move forward. So, the, the resolution is before council after their consideration.
The council were being asked to accept the report and also to authorize staff to, to work with the geotechnical engineer to further develop a plan. Counselor Doherty, second Counselor Smith. Discussion, Counselor Wires?
Through you, your worship, to the CAO. So, we don't have a cost?
Mr. Mayor, at this point right now, we've, we only know that we need to develop the plan with the geotech to divert the stream, and we need to understand what the biological or the environmental impacts are to relocating Overton Creek. And within that, we need to create a, do a cost estimate. So, we don't have a cost estimate yet because we simply, we need to get on site and do some further investigations and then develop our, our civil analysis and create a cost estimate.
But all the expenditures are going to come out of the slag?
That and the fact that our CAO is also talking to our partners who own this, our slag. And so, I, I think that's promising, we work together to avoid any future problems. They have a vested interest in continuing with, out any disruptions in their operation. Ready for the motion? All those in favor? Next item, there's a minor typo on the last line in the middle paragraph, was installed incorrectly, so the "in" is missing from "correctly" there. incorrectly, so the "in" is missing from correctly there. But basically, this is a situation where the foundation was improperly installed and the owner is asking for an opportunity to rebuild and reconstruct that site with one unit, and we're recommending it. So a motion to accept this. Councillor Smith, Councillor Roshagen, any comments? Straightforward, all those in favor? Carried. And down to information items, A to C. Let's see if I can do this right today. A, the, the recommendations of this, as recommended, the motion to accept the recommendations. Councillor Smith, Councillor Kendall, and going down through the list, Thompson, Okanagan Tourism, a regional tourism strategy, received for information and review is in the staff Community Christmas dinner, a request for us to make a $500 donation, as we've done in past. This has been a pretty phenomenal event that we really have been supporting, and I would recommend we continue to support. They moved from a little operation at the Legion to... Councillor Wires moves, Councillor Doherty seconds. This is a $500 donation, all those in favor. And now attendance at that, as I said earlier, I, I'm not able to attend. I have a, a full house of people coming and I can't, can't do it, but there were people that were attending on council. Councillor Doherty is attending.
What day is that?
This is on Christmas Day.
Oh, Christmas Day.
Anyone else attending?
My grandkids come.
No. Councillor Doherty?
Yeah.
You're the man, and so you'll be expected to say a few words.
Yes, in France?
Ah, oui, on France.
Yeah.
That might be nice.
Yeah, yeah.
Some multiculturalism. And...
Yeah, I'll be attending, your worship.
Great, thank you. And the final is the task list in process and completed, and that's it. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor? Brings us to the most exciting part of the agenda, which is bylaws. We have two bylaws. We have bylaw number 1942, the Roxall Road closure, presented to council for final reading, bylaw 1942. Can I have a motion for that? Councillor Doherty, Councillor Kendall, we understand here that we backed up and corrected a mistake, but this is finalizing it and it is going to work for both parties. All those in favor? Did you want to?
No.
No, okay, all those in favor. Thank you. And our revenue anticipation, bylaw number 1943. Again, we all understand that this is to give us the ability to go forward with financing our operations until revenues come in. And I have a motion for first, second, and third reading. We'll start with first reading of bylaw 1943, Councillor Smith. Second, Councillor Doherty. This is first reading, all those in favor. And second reading, Councillor Doherty, Councillor Kendall, second reading, all those in favor. And third reading, Councillor Wires, Councillor Roshagen, all those in favor, third reading. Thank you. Eight items, we have none, and we have questions from the media and the public. Gentlemen, anyone wish to come forward with anything? Mr. Wires?
Just very briefly, I just wanted to thank the city. I ride my bike every day from Carson Road near Cromwell, and I go through the, the rail trail, and I wanted to thank the city for keeping on top of the snow clearing because it's been a joy to ride on a ice... I mean, I, I like riding, I've got studded tires, I like riding on the ice, whatever, but it's been cleared regularly. I like to even clear off the, the road, road edges from after the plows across the streets, which I think is really good for accessibility for many of the less able people that use that trail regularly. So I wanted to thank the city for that.
Another gold star for the staff.
Smiling occasion of report card.
Mr. Ronigan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, my homesel. Some questions and a couple of comments. First one deals with the city website. Why can't I find reports on the environment committee, the deer committee, and maybe the economic development committee?
We were asked...
I can't even find the bios on councilors. You've been in office for a year, and there's still no information on most of the council.
We are. I can tell you that the minutes of the committees have not been getting there because of our own problems as councilors. And so we've been asked by our CAO to tighten it up and get those committee minutes in so they can be displayed in our, in our information at council meetings and be put up on the site. So we're under noted as by our own city staff to tighten up the minutes. You will see them in future.
Thank you.
Oh, you're working on my file?
Second, a special request. I think I made this request a year or maybe two ago, but that the library be referred to as the Grand Forks and District Public Library. That's the library.
The full name?
With its reference to the, to the Library Association, it's the Grand Forks Public Library Association. But if you call it a Grand Forks Library, as it appears mostly in the city minutes, council minutes, that implies or could imply that it's a municipal library, and it isn't. I'm a taxpayer in Christina Lake, and we pay $140,000 a year to support the library. It's a, it's a regional library in essence. Area D, the city, area C. So that's a request that if it's...
Yeah, I think it's a, you know, it's a minor thing, but an important image and one that we're always fighting against. This is not a city library, and you're very right for us to correct that and use proper language.
Question, is the nephelometer traveling?
I would acquiesce to Councillor Wires.
Yes, it has been. It hasn't been in the last week.
No.
The volunteer committee didn't have anybody in, in the last week. But I'm dropping it off again tomorrow to Mr. Paul Pennard, who will be out again. Everybody's quite busy right now for the Christmas season, so...
And the air is quite thick with wood smoke.
But we have strong participation with the IHA, Air Quality Representative from Kelowna, who will be participating with the subcommittee in January, along with the University of Victoria. Eleanor Seddon wants to be part of the conference calls, and they are strategically sitting down to work out a profile for the monitoring that we're doing in this community because they want to use it as basically a template for other communities to follow if, if, you know, if they, if they wish to do so. But it, it has caught attention of, of IHA's Air Quality Representative in, in Kelowna, so he's going to be participating. And the new AJ Downey, who is the new representative from MOE. Remember, we used to have Paul Willis sitting at the table, well, Paul Willis has retired. So they've had a changeover, and Mr. Downey does receive all of our information, all of our agenda packages, and he has indicated that he's prepared to participate with the nephelometer subcommittee starting in January.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question here, and I think this is probably one for Councillor Smith. If he's keeping up to date on SITA, has the city been apprised of the latest developments on SITA and its possible impacts on tendering? And I notice in the report from the CAO, on the last page of the primary committee report, there's a comment on tendering, and I assume that fits the SITA procurement items. And I know you don't have official reports, at least I don't, but I do have access on occasion through the Council of Canadians on leaked information, and there's some pretty scary wording in that. And whether the UBCM is keeping on top of this, it seems that the provinces don't participate a great deal or haven't made their positions clear. So...
So the question is, are we on top of it?
Yeah.
And I would, I would ask our CAO, Mr. Allen, are we, are we staying on top? The new policy is set up to address that to some extent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the new policy that we have in place for purchasing is actually more restrictive than TELMA and, and the, I'm not, I'm not actually sure if it's called SITA or not, but it's more restrictive than TELMA. There's more controls in place than that, which also is tendering everything over 50,000, whereas I think TELMA is over 75,000. So we're actually, we've got a few more controls in place, but we feel so for a community our size and the number of purchases that we would have, it would meet our needs better.
Thank you. Does that answer your questions?
Not completely, but I think it's, it's really pretty scary stuff for, you know, a small community.
Right. But again, is there leaked information, not, not...
Pardon?
This is leaked information rather than...
Well, it's, you know, it's an official leaked report. It's part of the, it's not somebody's imagination gathered from conversations.
Councillor Smith?
Well, some months ago, I asked Councillor to back a resolution that, to exclude municipalities from the SITA negotiations, and Alex Adamanenko, of course, has had some comments about that. I'll follow up with him to see what more I can find out about it. But it would be nice to be kind of in the loop so that when, you know, when these questions get asked, we have an intelligent answer.
I know. So Councillor Smith, we'll be looking into that as well if our CAO is on top of it from the staff side.
A comment on, or a question about the railway. Will they be upgrading it, maintaining it? I understand that it was in pretty bad condition, the ties and so on.
Yes, there is maintenance going on there right now, actually. I've been aware of it, and I think Councillor McGregor also mentioned that there are some, some repairs going on. But I think the best person to answer that at this point would be Wayne Doane, who has kind of led the discussions with the rail group and with the stakeholders.
Thank you. With regard to Overton Creek and the fissures in the slag pile?
Yes.
If those are 10 meters or 30-some feet deep, is it, is there any measure being taken to make sure that people are protected? I know that...
There is, there is signs right now and fencing there. But that certainly, that liability issue is there with some of those cracks. CAO Allen, do you think that there is a further need for security at the site?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the situation at the site would be, it is a responsibility under the Mines Act for the, the mining company that would, which would be Pacific Abrasives to ensure the security of the site. We're bringing that to their attention, and under our agreement, it would be their responsibility to ensure that those, those requirements are met. The city wouldn't be wanting to get involved with that type of situation because of due to liabilities, but we will be bringing it to their attention as, as part of the geotechnical report once it's completed.
Thank you. And a final comment. With regard to Councillor Wires' report on the, the library, vice chair attending a conference, I'd like to remind the council that he was listening to a futurist.
Yes.
And futurists...
Blue sky.
Look at the sky. I don't know what with, but, you know, some of the suggestions, and even the librarian on the, on the night of, that his report was given, I said some of that could be nonsense. He said, yes, there doesn't seem to be much quality control.
He was the guest speaker.
There were a number of us who were planning to attend, but realized that that was basically the focus, was a futurist approach. We were looking for practical things to direct our next few years here in Grand Forks, so it didn't look like that was the answer for us. But it is interesting to see that perspective.
Yes, it is. Futurists Thomas Frey.
And costly stuff.
The Pennsylvania Institute of the USA.
Okay, thanks.
And just a final question about the library. Is there any progress, has any progress been made on the renovation proposal, the grant?
They, they have announced some grants. We haven't heard anything, so we're, we're watching closely for a word from the minister.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and there's a deer committee meeting tomorrow morning at 9:30, and Merry Christmas to everybody, Merry Christmas to the City of Grand Forks. Motion to adjourn?